Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is called to order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We will now play a video with the proper protocol, ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way, but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to do a really quick move around of one item on the agenda here. I've actually got a proclamation for the 2023 Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Day. I'd like to see if the council can join me down front it so our public safety folks can get the proclamation and obviously then return back to their duties, so. Chief, that was just my script. Don't think I just ad libbed that, so. Wonderful. Oh, no, you're good, you're good. All right, so, this proclamation reads, "Whereas the law enforcement records professionals of the city of Tempe Police Department work tirelessly to collect, assess, organize, preserve, and provide access to records that have lasting vital value to our democratic legal system and community; and whereas records personnel assist community members, law enforcement officers, professional staff, and local, state, and federal agencies; and whereas Tempe PD Records, small group of employees, field is staggering, uh, field, a staggering number of often complex calls, over 2,900 calls monthly and 35,000 calls annually; and whereas records personnel fulfill public and law enforcement records requests, access and maintain criminal history records, processing over 7,300 public records requests annually; and whereas the Tempe Police Records elected to pursue national certification through a lengthy painstaking process, converting to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, the FBI's data standard, to promote more informed and detailed policing data; and whereas the safety of the Tempe community and the goal of the Tempe Police Department greatly depends on these services and the dedicated professionals who daily provide them. Now therefore I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare November 2nd, 2023 as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Day in Tempe, Arizona." All right, item number two is called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. We've got a couple of comment cards here, and then I can obviously open it up to folks in the audience, but the first comment card I have here is from Darlene Justice. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Darlene Justice. I live in Tempe. I'm here today representing the North Tempe Neighborhood Association. Today's issue review session will address item 3A about federal principles regarding aviation. On October 6th, we sent to you, North Tempe Neighborhood Association, sent to you our letter concerning safety, serious safety issues with Phoenix Sky Harbor. It has been reported that the operation of Sky Harbor only narrowly avoided two recent airborne aircraft collisions. These incidents and information about the aviation safety issues were also reported widely on national and local radio and TV. Operations at the airport result in such near misses, or worse, that could actually lead to incursions threatening people on the ground in Tempe, people who live, work, and attend school, and politicians in Tempe. Our letter requested that the FAA, under its authority and responsibility, perform a thorough investigation of near miss incidents at or near Sky Harbor, to analyze the reasons for the incidents, prepare regulations and programs to correct these issues. We also asked that they meet with the city of Tempe and its citizen stakeholders to inform them about the FAA's proposed solutions to minimize such incidents. The silence is deafening. I am here today to ask the city of Tempe to take aggressive actions to, one, replace our Tempe aviation specialists, two, expand the direction of TAVCO to also include Phoenix Sky Harbor aviation issues, not just noise. Repair the reporting structure within Tempe, which has been repaired, I'm very glad that prioritization of aviation issues should go through our city manager. Initiate a meeting with the FAA. Tempe needs to initiate a meeting with the FAA and Phoenix Sky Harbor on these most serious and safety concerns. It is time to seriously address the FAA. The city of Phoenix and Sky Harbor are not immediately prepared to improve, if they are not immediately prepared to improve Sky Harbor's performance and to avoid potential incursions. We are prepared to begin a public process. I think you know about it in the letter. Okay, I want to say that when our IGA was generated years ago, Phoenix Sky Harbor was a different place. There were far fewer flights, far fewer places for them to land within the Sky Harbor. They are growing. We do not have a table, seat at the table.
Give you 10 more seconds.
So I'm asking you to please prioritize this before something very bad happens. And I love Tempe, and I love all of you, and you've always been very responsive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Justice, appreciate it. The next card I have here is from the Honorable Barbara Sherman.
I'll pass.
Oh, you'll pass? Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. All right, so that is all the speaker cards I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing that, I'll close that portion, and I know that item that Ms. Justice talked about will be covered, as she said, under item 3A, which is where we're going right now, which is the 2023-2024 federal principles. I see Shawna Warner, Maria Triplar coming up. Welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Shawna Warner, interim government relations director. And I'm joined with by Maria Triplar with Ballard Spar. And before we get to the review of our federal principles, I'm going to turn it over to her for a quick DC update.
Thank you for having me today. First, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues from the Ballard Spar Government Relations Team who are here with me, Tim Jenkins and Ken Jaren. And also, before I address our federal policy agenda, I'd like to first briefly address the current political landscape and how it may impact our priorities. As we all saw last month, the extremely tight margin in the Republican-led House of Representatives has led to significant challenges, given the remarkable internal conflict within the GOP conference. Former Speaker McCarthy was ousted in early October, and it took several weeks before Speaker Mike Johnson was elected to replace him. Speaker Johnson now has the responsibility of assuring legislation through a bitterly divided House, and this unpredictability warrants a very careful and intentional approach with the city's priorities. One of Speaker Johnson's first orders of business is to complete the appropriations process in the House. He must then subsequently work with the Democrat majority in the Senate so that the bills can be signed by President Biden to fund the government. However, that is likely to be a very complex process, given the competing priorities between Democrats and Republicans, such as we are seeing right now with the discussions around federal funding for Israel and Ukraine. With a new era of divided government and with so many House Republicans calling for significant cuts in domestic spending programs, the annual budget process will certainly become more challenging. I am closely watching the appropriations process and monitoring the applications submitted by the city of Tempe for earmarks, or community project funding requests, as we now call them. Thanks to Congressman Stanton, we've had much success over the past two appropriations cycles of getting several Tempe projects funded. This cycle, Congressman Stanton submitted two requests on our behalf, which have moved forward in the House process: the North Tempe Affordable Housing Revitalization Program, as well as the Recharge Well Components for the Chirene Reclamation Facility. These requests, respectively, would assist with the redevelopment of a motel located in North Tempe into permanently affordable multifamily housing, and the construction of recharge well pipelines as part of the larger Chirene Reclamation Facilities and Improvement Project. Turning to our policy agenda, I have worked closely with city staff to ensure that the city is availing itself of all opportunities to leverage federal funds to advance improvements for residents. This year, Tempe applied for grants to address a multimodal project discretionary funds within the Promoting Resilience Operations for Transformative Efficient Cost-Saving and Transportation Funds, and through the Reconnecting Communities and Neighborhoods Programs. These monies would address designing and construction of an upstream dam bike and pedestrian bridge, and the Rio Salado North Bank Path, a seven-mile multimodal corridor, and the grade-separated bike and pedestrian bridge over the UPRR facility in central Tempe. As for housing-related matters, in addition to legislative improvements, we have been advocating with you, Mayor Woods, and HUD, to push for additional opportunities for affordable housing to benefit Tempe. We will continue to work towards this goal in collaboration with our federal partners. While the city has benefited from previous pieces of legislation, such as the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law and Inflation Reduction Act, and we worked with city staff to identify federal grant opportunities that mesh with city priorities. However, the current House of Representatives has made clear that it will not hesitate to roll back some of the funding provided in those laws. For example, we saw certain funds eligible for use by state and local governments in the IRA that were rescinded in the debt ceiling negotiation. And as recently as last week, the House included language in an appropriations bill that would rescind additional funds from the IRA, though those particular funds were not specific to state and local governments. We will continue to keep a very close eye on that. Lastly, many of our federal principles align closely with the advocacy agendas of the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities. And we work closely with both organizations on outreach to Capitol Hill and federal agencies. The leadership roles and level of engagement undertaken by many of you with those organizations provides a great opportunity to highlight the city's priorities and on a national stage, especially with the current administration. This concludes my presentations, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you, Shawna. Anyone have any questions for the council? I was going to just say one really quick thing, too, just to kind of circle back to what Ms. Justice talked about in her conversation. Is there a way to incorporate some of the things that she was talking about from a federal principle standpoint? I know there were some things that, Madam City Manager, I know that are things that we can do here, from what she was talking about, the Tempe Aviation Commission or TAVCO, and ways to expand some of their responsibilities to look over Sky Harbor, but I know there were some requests in there that were even more specifically related to kind of some of the federal principles. Can we incorporate some of those to satisfy Ms. Justice's concerns?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, under federal principles, one of our general categories is aviation, and so we can add safety along with the noise components that we have there.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was covered. Thank you. All right, everybody else good? Wonderful, great. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, that brings us to item 3B, 2024 State Legislative Principles. And then there was one. Hi, Shawna.
So thank you again, Shawna Warner, interim government relations director. And you have in your packet the state legislative principles, and these do reflect all your council priorities and are the basis of our positions during the upcoming state legislative session, which kicks off January 8th. And again, similar to the federal ones, those are arranged in general categories and include overarching policies of preserving local decision-making and preserving local resources. And then we get into more specifics in the document under bullet points. And during the session, we do always continually seek direction from you and keep you updated on progress of any legislation that could impact Tempe. And then happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Shawna. Anyone, council, any comments or questions? Me either?
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We're going to, Shawna, I have to check the record because Marge Zilla used to have the record for the shortest presentations, so, but I'm going to have to go back to the tape at some point and see if you might have actually just beaten her, so. Thank you. All right, that brings us to item 3C, 2023 Community and Business Survey Results. Welcome, Wydell, welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share the results from engaging with our community and our business members in regards to the city's performance regarding quality of life, economic development, safe and secure communities. The community survey and the business survey inform over 21 data points for our performance measures. And so we look at those performance measures in relationship to the city council strategic priorities. But the data from these surveys also informs our strategies and our operations. For example, we know that we have opportunities to improve our streets, quality of our city's streets, but the survey also gives us focus on what neighborhoods alongside other projects that we can align with. And so we utilize this data not only for the performance measures, but also to inform the key strategies and programs and services. I would like, before we get started with Chris, I'd like to thank our SMIO team, Mary Maisy, Adam Samuels, Kimberly Satello, and our new member, Helen Tac, for all of their work that helps put these surveys forward with our community, and then, most importantly, our utilization of the data to inform our work. The performance measures tonight will highlight the community and business survey, but prior to today, this is four of four presentations that Mr. Tatham has given across the city today. We started off with a presentation for our directors, followed up by a lunch presentation with our business member organizations, such as Downtown Tempe Authority, Tempe Tourism, and the Chamber of Commerce, and also our Economic Development Director, Mike D. Domenico, and our city manager. And so we found that those collaborations with this data, as well as with our engagement, helps us create a better community holistically with our partner agencies. And then following that, Chris presented to over 200 employees who attended our presentation this afternoon in regards to our community and business surveys. And I think it was really important what he shared with them in regards to how our employees are key to Tempe leading the way in regards to performance nationally. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris, and we'll follow up with you and your council aides in regards to training on the interactive dashboards.
Thank you. Mayor and everyone on the council, it's great to be back. For those of you who don't know this, I've been coming here for 26 years. I've conducted more than 50 surveys for the city, surveyed more than 30,000 people in this community, and I've had the pleasure to be working with you through 9/11, through the collapse of the housing industry, through COVID. And one of the reasons I keep coming back is you actually use the data better than anybody. I don't do many of these presentations anymore, but I learn from you, and we take the ideas of how you're and share it with other communities. So the reason you do so well is I think you take this seriously. When I was here last year, had some concerns about safety, but I'm going to show you today, you've turned and addressed those in a really great way. So today, I'm going to kind of walk you through the results of the two surveys briefly, but there's three things I hope you remember when we're all done, because there are hundreds of questions, piles of data, all sorts of dashboards. If there's three things to remember is, one, I think it's important to remind yourselves and sometimes celebrate that you do set the standard for the quality of city services. I tell you that once a year, I think in between, you work on other things, but one of the reasons I think you address the other concerns is you really care. I told your staff today, you're kind of like the New England Patriots used to be. You need to be in the Super Bowl every year, and that's where you work, and that's where you play, and your scores are at that level. I'm going to show them to you. Secondly, last year, the results generally were following a path we saw nationally of being lower. That path has continued for the nation, but not for Tempe. You're going to see the year results in most areas are improved, many of them have improved significantly, but to stay there, continue to focus on many of the priorities that were priorities last year: how you deal with people who are experiencing homelessness, making sure you take care of your infrastructure, and certainly making sure the community is safe. And so those are the things I'm going to lead you to, and those priorities are the same, really, for both residents and businesses, which is a unique opportunity to have the priorities aligned. So with that, I'm going to first start off with the resident survey highlights. The methodology is very similar to what it's been the last couple of years. It's changed since we used to do the surveys by phone 20 years ago, when people answered the phone, but the methodology of selecting a random sample of households, ensuring that we get at least 100 from each of your character areas, making sure that the distribution generally reflects the composition of the city's population with regard to the demographics and the geographic distribution, and ultimately weighting those character areas to reflect the actual distribution of the city, has stayed the same. Their results aren't perfect, but they're pretty much the same level of accuracy year after year. We had over 1,000 respondents this year, and their results have an accuracy of plus or minus 3% at the 95% level of confidence. That just means if we did a survey 100 times, we should get these results within 3% or less, so it's very good. And there's lots of ways your city's already using it, which is one of the things I'm impressed by. In addition, I just wrote this map up, and it's probably from, in 1997, somebody on the council asked me that nobody got any surveys that they knew, and so how do we know we had good representation from the city? In those days, I couldn't do this, and now I always include a map to show where the respondents are. It's not exact address, we actually code it to the center of the block, so that way we don't compromise people's confidentiality. But all in all, if you look at the distribution of the sample, it's not perfect, but it's very close to what the city's population looks like, and each of the key groups that you're trying to assess is well represented. So with that, I'm going to walk you through the findings of the survey first. First thing, as I mentioned upfront, you're setting the standard, and you might wonder, well, how do you know that, Chris? Well, we used to just have a collection of cities. If you've been around long enough, we used to list all these cities that we would compare you to. Now, we actually do a national survey every year of over 8,000 U.S. residents, and we track where the people live, what size of city they live in, what the population of the community, and all sorts of indicators, and that really gives us a true national average for satisfaction with local governmental services. We then are able to compare you to a wide range of indicators, and I'm going to share some of those today. But the things I want to highlight first are what I consider to be perhaps the three or four most important strategic indicators of, I've been doing this a long time for thousands of communities, millions of people surveyed. I can pretty much tell you by looking at these four questions whether your community is in good shape or not. And you're in great shape when I see these. First, overall quality of city services is 32% above the national average. Most communities have fewer than half their residents giving positive ratings, shown by the light blue. Tempe, you can see, is in the dark blue. And then we have the mid-sized communities, which tend to be suburban communities, they actually perform a little bit better than big or little cities, and they're in the purple. The other thing that's really impressive is the value for taxes. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but your rating is 23% above the national average, and that means that you're investing in things that, though not everybody likes to pay taxes, doesn't like to pay fees, they see the value of what those investments are. And city leadership, this has continued to decline nationally. There's just been lots of challenges, everything from what's happening in Washington, people just generally are feeling less positive about leaders, but you'll notice that you're 17% above the national average at 55 versus 38. And finally, the image of the city, people think this is a great place to be. This is a great image, and you can see that's 21%. So a lot to celebrate there. When we look at specific community services or your city services, if I read all these and leave somebody out, somebody will be mad that I didn't compliment them, but I just want to highlight across the board that all those blue bars are a whole lot taller than those light blue bars and the purple bars, and that's because you're setting the standard for almost everything in this chart. In fact, I want to highlight the customer service particularly. One of the things that we did during COVID is we actually looked at what distinguished the cities that actually ended up performing well. Came down to two things, the customer service and communication. Two things that people don't normally, well, they are really important, but they actually value it a lot, and we found that the interaction with employees has longstanding residual value. If you have a good contact with a city employee, you tend to remember that, and then when you have a bad trash delivery day, you forgive it because you think city employees are good people, and you'll notice that the difference on this is one of your biggest differentials in the survey, at 73% compared to the national average of just 39%. And you can see that's really across the board, and when you look at the information, which is the third one down, you're at 76, which is 30% above the national average. So you're doing a great job keeping folks informed, a great job providing customer service, and even issues that many cities have really challenged themselves with and had lots of problems, the inclusiveness nature, you're at 74% compared to 46% nationally. So a lot of things are going really well here in Tempe. Transit has collapsed the ratings most places around the country, you're still at 61%. So bottom line is, you continue to do really well. And I could continue, you can see all these blue bars are bigger than all the dark blue bars, but I do want to highlight just even how you're handling your meetings. I saw the video when I first got here, so I know you've probably had some challenges when I see a video like that, but your ability to participate in cities' decision-making process is almost 20% above the national average, which is now just 1 in 3 people in most communities believes they have that ability. So again, you're doing a lot of good things right. However, there are some opportunities to do better, and that's when you're going to the Super Bowl every year, average isn't okay. These are the areas where you still rate better than the national average, you're a little below some of the similar-sized city averages, but you see, they have to do with things like some of the infrastructure, some of the issues about safety and things like that, that I know you're aware of, they also show up as priorities, and that's one of the reasons I want to make sure that I share when I come here. It is good news, but there are opportunities to continue to do better. Second thing we learned this year is that the city's moving in the right direction. While the national average has dropped for almost every city service we rate compared to 2022, the averages for Tempe improved, or the overall results improved, in 89 of 117 areas. One area stayed the same, 27 decreased. Of those changes, most were not statistically significant, but of the ones that were significantly on the positive side, you had a lot to list, so I only listed the top 10, and you can see that they're here. What it really shows is a lot of city programs suffered during COVID, you know, your parks and recreation, your swimming pools, public libraries, arts, and you'll notice that you've recovered in all those areas that as a result of COVID, people weren't able to go, or they stopped going, and we've seen all those ratings go back up. Other communities are now providing those services, but they're not meeting expectations, so their ratings are going down. You're doing the opposite. But when I was here last year, one of the things that concerned me were your safety ratings, particularly in downtown. ratings, particularly in downtown, and you notice that two of your biggest improvements compared to a year ago were feeling, which is nine of five, feeling of safety at night in the Mill Avenue downtown areas is up 9% in just one year, and number seven, you can see feeling of safety during the day, is also up. And that really shows me that when I come here last year, see your data, I'm a little concerned, I come back a year later, and two of the things that I thought were great indicators of whether you've addressed that issue or not have improved significantly. Now, for the decreases, which I know you're all going to hover on right now, because that's what great cities do, transit services are lower, it's lower everywhere. Service was, people changed their behaviors during COVID, as a result of COVID, it's going to take a while for it to come back. We're actually probably the biggest transit research company in the country when it comes to onboard surveys, and we're seeing that in all the markets that we do research. Leadership is also down nationally, a 6% decrease really isn't that significant compared to what I've seen in others, but again, it's an area that has decreased, your streets and sidewalks, and also the new commercial development, those are the only areas that are really notable decreases. So remember, when you're focusing on these, like I know you will, that there's this list and the 89 areas that have actually improved, but I know you're a great city and you'll continue to look at those. So with that said, what are their priorities? This is what I said upfront, they really haven't changed a lot from last year, but really helping the services for people who are experiencing homelessness, how do you deal with that issue? Issues of public safety and police, it's not just police, it's a broader issue than that, I think that you understand that, and then the condition of your infrastructure. Those are the things, I think if you keep focusing on those, you'll see improvements, and I've seen that over the years, because there was time when trash was your issue, there were times when fire was your issue, there's been times when public safety's been your issue in the past, and each time I've identified issues, the city has turned them around for the positives. So, and you see that here on this chart, when we asked people what the top three priorities were, you'll see the issue related to homelessness is at the top, followed by city streets, police services, and then everything else is kind of a distant third on the list. So that's kind of what we heard from residents. We did not do a business survey last year, we do that every other year. So this year, the business survey is more flat, it's about half up, half down. Had it followed the trend of the resident survey, we'd probably be seeing improvements, because last year we saw some decreases on the resident survey, so we're now going back to 2021. The overall survey involved the administration of surveys to 401 businesses, I won't go into the statistical sampling, I think you're used to those differences now. It's not perfect, but a plus or minus, a plus or minus 5% margin of error is very, very good, and most of the questions are very similar to what we've asked in the past, so you have trends as far as the survey is concerned. One of the things we really valued is the diversity of the types of businesses that are represented. We've got all range from retail, manufacturing, professional, healthcare, hotels and restaurants, that's great, because that way you could do some sub-analysis. We also captured the location of the businesses, so you can actually create maps and see where people in different parts or businesses in different parts of the city, how they responded. We also got great representation based on years of residence, or years of being, having their business in Tempe. One in seven have been here less than five years, one in 10 more than 40 years, and so that's another thing, as you're changing, how are the people who've been here long viewing things compared to people who are just coming here? Sometimes that can result in conflicting expectations or priorities. So with that said, I'm going to highlight some of the business survey findings. The first one is the general perceptions of businesses are extremely good. 83% think the city's business-friendly, 88% think it's a welcoming destination for visitors and tourists, and 77% think the business atmosphere is good or improving. So overall, very, very good findings. And we look at the ratings for your city services, you can see green is good and red is bad, there's lots of green on these charts. In fact, you can see the majority of the items rated were rated very high, particularly your public safety services across the board, you see your utility services and so forth are all rated very, very well. When we go to the second page, these are the ones that are rated a little bit lower, but even among these, there aren't any major problems. In other words, the most dissatisfaction was traffic on city streets. That's an interesting one for businesses, because it's a problem, but it also means people are probably coming to your business. And so usually, that's not a problem in dying communities, so that's one issue that sometimes you've got to deal with, but that's because people want to be here. Otherwise, as you look at that, you'll see that the other areas that had more than 20% negatives were the infrastructure with the streets, the issue with code enforcement, and how well the city's handling growth and housing issues, which are similar to when we look at the resident survey, those tend to be the areas you're more average in, which is why I think the businesses see it the same way. When we ask them for the top priorities, or why do they plan to stay here, low crime. In fact, it's also one of the biggest reasons they come here. So I think when people are coming to the Phoenix metro area, there's something about Tempe's image, but also the perception that it's a safe place, that is the reason businesses come first, they then want to stay because they wanted to stay that way. You can see the image of the city, level of taxation, and attitude toward business round out the top four reasons. When we asked people what the top priorities were, businesses had economic development, we don't fully understand what that means, that's something we'll probably take a look at in more detail, they want to make sure the city remains safe and take care of the infrastructure, which is almost the same list that you saw from the residents. So with that, I go back to the top three things. Celebrate the fact that you continue to set the standard, but the reason you get to celebrate every year is you don't rest on your past accomplishments, you're always looking for ways to be responsive to needs and move the city forward, and that's what I see in your data, looking at it year after year, which is the reason why the rest of the nation is seeing lower ratings this year. You've actually reversed the trend and seen significant improvements across the board, especially in services that were hit perhaps the hardest as a result of the COVID closures. But to stay there, making sure you continue to address the issue of people experiencing homelessness, make sure that you take care of the infrastructure and continue to make the city be a safe place. I think if you do that, I'll come back again next year and probably have good news again. But anyway, congratulations, Mayor and council members, you don't get here by accident, especially when you have really big challenges like we've had in this country the last couple of years. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Council, any comments or questions? Councilmember Navarro?
First, Chris, thank you. It seems like it was last Thursday since I saw you. I know you go so quick, it's every year, I mean, this is great stuff. As usual, I appreciate the data, we appreciate the information, it helps us guide us in what we're going to do and how we're going to achieve things. I know that we often feel that we're not trending the way you're saying, but I think this reinforces what our public needs to hear and see, because those are real big indicators, you know, showing that, you know, because everyone has the array of messaging through Twitter and X and whatever it is, and so opinions get broadcast left and right. I think the survey is great, it's vast, it's over our city, it's, I just enjoy the information, it's almost like it's just, well, it is random, and just a good section of what we're trying to achieve across the city. So I just want to tell you, thank you, I appreciate this effort you guys put in, and thank you to staff and everybody else that participates in this, it's great stuff. Thank you.
Hey, councilmember, anyone else? Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris and Wydell. As I was reviewing and then listening to your presentation, all I could think about was staff, and I look in the audience at mostly staff right now, and you represent the rest of staff, and I'd like to congratulate all of you on this hard work, and City Manager, to you as their leader, thank you all. This is through your efforts, we get to hear it, we get to answer questions about it, but it is absolutely the collective work of all of the staff members in Tempe, every single department, every single level, and I feel it from my colleagues on the dais, we're very proud to work with all of you, so thank you for that. And to any residents and businesses who may be watching or listening, we pay attention to the surveys. And Chris, we chatted earlier, and you're absolutely right. I read through the good stuff, and it was great, but I went right to the, where the areas for improvement, and that's what we pay attention to, and it does guide us, so thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Councilmember Garland?
I was going to say the same thing, I'm a data nerd. I geeked out over all the charts that you had in the book, that I asked my assistant to do a spiral notebook for each one of the surveys, and I had been looking over them the last few days and absolutely loving it. I love all the information that's in there, and I thank you so much for the outreach. You know, I look at the numbers like 1,000 something that did the community survey, I'd love to see more, I know that that's hard to get. I'd love to see more in there, but I really like the fact, I was pointing out to Councilmember Navarro, when you had the slide up there that showed the community that is west of the I-10, is it I-10? Yeah, I-10, that they, there's a lot of times when I've gone over there and spoke to Councilmember Hodge, and I were over there last year for Gain, and they're like, well, nobody ever comes over here, nobody cares what we think. And I love the fact that there were so many little red dots on that corner, so I do appreciate that you're getting all of the areas of the city, I think that's so darn, so important for us. And then I want to ask, so, you know, when we look at the survey, and Wydell, this might be something you can answer too, but using the survey helps us to improve things that we have already set up in the city, but it also reflects what we do in our city budget, because we try to tie all that together, is that correct?
That is correct, and that is specifically why this survey and its results, both the Community and Business surveys, and when we do the employees' survey every other year, is time to proceed the next presentation following this in regards to our long-range forecast, our strategic management update, and our overall city performance, and where you as a council want to have that early conversation on where to start focusing on during the next resource cycle.
Okay, great. So it's not, it's not just learning what the city thinks of us and patting ourselves on the back, we actually use it as a tool to make a difference in the community moving forward.
Right. Our staff and our council and our leadership and even our community are data consumers just like you, Councilmember Garland, and utilizing the data to inform our actions, our policies, our strategies, and our operations is part of the Tempe culture.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions?
No, thank you, though.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, really, oh yeah.
One administrative note, there was one document that will be updated online for as part of the public record with the City Clerk's Office, a minor editorial in regards to a label, a labeling of categorization, so I was following up on our official notification of that.
Okay, Councilmember Garland?
One other question I had, one question I had, I forgot to ask, so where can residents see this entire document?
So we have the entire document, both current and our historic survey results, alongside our interactive dashboards for each of our surveys at tempe.gov on our Strategic Management and Innovation Office webpage, and we will entertain questions if you need help working through the dashboards, if you're looking for something specific to help with communications and engagement with our neighborhoods, with our businesses, we're happy to assist with that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, wonderful, thank you so much, appreciate the presentation, great job as always.
We'll wish Chris safe flight back to Oletha.
Safe flight back, looking forward to number 27, so. All right, next up, item 3D, Strategic Management Performance-led Budgeting Process Update and Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe, otherwise known as the START Tool Process. I see Tom Dunzing has joined, Wydell?
I'm feeling a thank you, Mayor, Council, good evening again, Wydell Holmes, Director of Strategic Management Innovation, alongside our deputy, Chief Deputy City Manager, Tom Dunzing. I do have to make a note that we're missing our third partner in crime who retired recently, so feeling a little bit of an empty chair with us tonight, right? But we will continue with his legendary work here as we proceed tonight. So this evening, we'd like to provide the City Council and Mayor an update to the strategic management and the council priority strategic plan. This also informs our performance-led budgeting process, which as you know is unique, we start with where do we want to end up, and then we align our resources. Other cities don't operate that way, they just look at their budget and say, what can we do? And we say, here's where we want to go. And then also, to inform that process, we utilize our Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe, and that is our START Tool. So with that, we'll move along here. So tonight, I'll just give you a brief update on some minor changes in regards to performance measures, mostly phrasing refinement. We'll introduce our performance-led budgeting and then move to some minor, some details in regards to the START Tool, and then just a quick reminder of what the 2324 fiscal year acceleration models were as we move through and kick off this budget season. So with that, you'll notice that there's a lot of performance measures, out of the 105 performance measures, we have several that we just continued as part of our continuous improvement process, worked with departments and staff teams in regards to refine the language and the phrasing, and you'll be, those are noted in your packet, typically in orange because we don't like red, right? So those are just minor editorial changes, with one exception I'd like to point out, and that is really in regards to our capital project program, and the staff are putting a very bold target and commitment in regards to on-time completion in regards to our CIP projects. And I think that again is just another exhibit and model in regards to Tempe's desire, especially our employees' desire to be high-performing, you know, not only here locally, but across the nation. But the other reports, performance measures are primarily just revisions for better clarity, better understanding, and more user-friendly statements, so that people understand what we've decided on in regards to operationalizing your priorities, what that really means. And then I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you, Wydell, Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. As it relates to the budget process, really, the START Tool allows the council the ability to identify its priorities, and we take it very seriously. And then what happens is, when you identify the priorities, we go back, as departments, they'll work with Wydell and her staff to be able to work on strategies to advance your priorities that you identify. Areas of focus to advance the performance measures, collaboration, departments work well together, whether or not departments need to shift resources to advance your priorities, and lastly, additional funds needed, and you'll hear a lot on that tonight. As you know, we do have our challenges, and that is not a situation we created, it's the loss of the residential revenue that just was signed into law just three short months ago. The next step will be, and Wydell will go through, is kind of the procedure for council to go through and complete their START Tool, and she'll review on basically coming back to council. So just real quick, this is kind of a summation of the effort in the prior year. Again, council provides their direction early. Wydell will go through 15 performance measures that council wanted to accelerate in the prior year process, and what's really interesting is, the top three priorities that council had aligns perfectly with the three priorities that Mr. Tatham just reviewed, and those are services for our homeless, condition of our streets and sidewalks, and finally, public safety in Tempe. So again, strategies last year included cross-departmental collaboration, shifting resources, and we did have a significant amount of supplementals. We basically added back supplementals that were reduced during the COVID period. And again, what your direction will do is help form our decisions as we go through this budget process, working on both the CIP, that's the Capital Improvement Program, and our operating budget.
Thank you.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, thanks, you, Mayor. And just real quick, when we talk about streets and rideaway, or streets and sidewalks, I include rideaways, but am I wrong not to include that, because that seems to be the appearance of the city? And I don't know if that's what the council sees or doesn't see. I know that, we talked about it, but I know that's specific to streets and sidewalks, but it feels like it encompasses the rights or ways of, you know, our major arterials. I could look on my council for guidance, I guess.
It's a good, I'm actually not sure, I was, so when I look at the acceleration models, I'm not sure we talk about streets, if we're sort of just talking about kind of simple, you know, resurfacing of streets, or if we are talking about sort of the right-of-way where plants and things of that nature are instead of medians.
Excuse me, one of the 15 performance measures that you identified for this current fiscal year, the pavement quality index is really about the surface of the streets and neighborhoods and our arterials, et cetera. But we also have performance measures in regards to quality of our landscaper, we have data, and we also have standards that are in place for that, so I'm curious if that is what Councilwoman Navarro is referencing.
Yeah, it is, and it just seems like it's all together, in my opinion.
Right, and it feeds into image of the city, all of that, so, right.
Example is Scottsdale Road going north in North Tempe, we did a landscape improvement, but yet the streets and the curbing was not improved, but it all is the appearance of North Scotts, of that North Tempe area, that's what I'm trying to translate, is we're doing it all, not just doing some of it.
And Mayor, members of council, if I could, just talk a moment about the streets. As you all know, on September 28th, Mr. Shaver and I got up in front of council and talked about PQI acceleration, that is very much on our radar screen. We will be back in front of this council in short order to talk about that again as part of the authorization election, and that really, for Mayor and council, the public, it's pretty simple. We've got a PQI, which just is a measure of our, condition of our streets, it's at 60. It wouldn't improve for at least, I believe it's another 12, 13 years, up to the level of 70, which is our target, and what we presented was to be able to go from 60, past our target level of 70, to 80 in a period of four years. So we're going to come back So we're going to come back and discuss that. We're going to talk about the bonding process, which, Mayor, I know is very important to you, the authorization process, and kind of get that ball rolling in relative short order. So you're going to hear that recurring message throughout this budget process. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me do that.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll reintroduce the Start Tool. Again, this is where we start with where do we want to end up in regards to our performance as a city, and then we align our resources accordingly based on council direction and priorities. So on your online tool, I'll just, a few highlights is that you have a mobile-friendly application with the city, with your city login. I want to thank our staff in the IT department for helping us to develop this. You can save your work as you go, and then you can also provide yourself your own report of what you have prioritized in regards to the 105 performance measures. This year, we have set the parameters of the theoretical $100, again, not an allocation, but really a point system, where you would have a minimum distribution of 10 and a maximum distribution of 30. This is slightly different from last year. And the reason for this, as Mr. Dunsing just said, in regards to anticipation of revenue shortages and us being ahead of the game and being strategic, we wanted to compress the number of acceleration models that we would be focusing on in the next fiscal year. And so by changing the parameters, we're able to do that. When we ran this model based on last year's points distribution of the council, we went from 15 performance measures to about seven to accelerate. And that is part of a best practice. As one of our city leaders recently said, if everything's important, then nothing's important. And so we know that a best practice is to narrow your focus if you want to perform and execute with excellence. And so that is why the change in the parameter. We recently conducted a training with your council aides, which we appreciated their engagement and their involvement, not only the Start Tool, but how it relates to the performance measure and the budget process, and ultimately, the city's performance. So tonight, we're, tomorrow, actually, we will release the Start Tool to you via an individual email with your council aide copied by Kimberly Sotelo. We will ask that you begin allocating your points to the performance measures of importance to you, and have that done prior to November 17th. We'll give you some friendly nudges if we see that the tool hasn't been completed by you respectively. But we also will start looking at that. After November 17th, we'll prepare an analysis to present back with you on December 5th at the Work-Study Session. Not only does the Start Tool help us prioritize, it helps us also to start developing data-informed strategies in regards to the performance measures. And this is where the commitment of our department directors and their employee teams is very important in regards to the operating and CIP budget process. So a quick illustration for you and for the public.
Question, actually, sorry. Councilwoman McGarland?
I just, regarding the last screen, I know that last time you guys had to extend the deadline for us council members. I will say that one of the, I was one of the ones that didn't get their, get them in on time. So I will pledge
Thank you.
To get mine in by the 17th, and I challenge my council members to beat me, to see who gets ours in there first.
You win.
So.
There you go. You know, when you're keeping score, people play differently. So thank you for that challenge.
So I'm
I would just say, putting yourself on blast.
For DeDe and I, I'm going to do mine tonight.
We acknowledge there's some events happening also during that same period of time for council, and we appreciate, we appreciate that commitment, so thank you.
But I'm pledging.
And it's on the record now, so thank you.
Hopefully, we will not have you have to extend that date.
Thank you so much. That'll, that'll help our staff who do the, that run the analytics on it. So the Start Tool will, again, for you and for the public, you allocate between 10 and 30 points on a performance measure. You have a maximum distribution of 100. At the top of the tool, you'll be able to see your progress. If you have some more points to distribute or dollar, theoretical dollars, it'll show you that as well. Most importantly, though, as you're looking at different performance measures, I'd like for you to note that we have indicated in the tool whether it is meeting target or whether it is also currently accelerated. You also will have a direct link to the dashboard that shows the historical trends and the current strategies for that performance measure. So you have a lot in, a lot was included in your packet for this evening. So you do have some reference materials that would be helpful. But again, if you have any questions or need assistance, please just reach out to us. The other detail that I think is important in regards to the previous presentation is in regards to the community and business and the employee survey. We provide in your packet points of emphasis. And what that means is, if you recall, when Chris presented in our surveys the opportunity for improvement, opportunities for improvement quadrant, which is where our residents or our businesses, in this case, were, have items that are areas that are important but receiving lower satisfaction, we align performance measures to inform you what are, what are best-aligned areas in regards to the Start Tool to help achieve and move those areas forward. So again, your reference tools include not only the survey dashboards and the data on our performance.temp.gov site. You also will have, in your packet, you have the strategic plan and some of the minor paraphrasing, or phrasing revisions. You also have a listing of last, of the 15 performance measures that were, that you identified last year for acceleration for this fiscal year, and then also the points of emphasis that I just mentioned. So here are the 15 from last year. This is just as a reminder that some of them are already in the queue, and we'll work through whether or not if some of the same ones end up in your area of prioritization with the Start Tool results, we will work, we'll work together on figuring out how we, how we address those. I also want to share that when we do submit the report to you for December 5th and present it, it's a collective analysis of where you have the greatest consensus, as well as where you have inertia behind moving forward acceleration models. So that's the way that we'd like to present it to you again in regards to informing you where the data came from. But here's what it really is sharing, sharing with you as far as you move forward with prioritization. That'll conclude.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Council, any comments or questions about the Start Tool?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Good luck.
All right. Then that brings us to item 3E, Long-Range Financial Forecast Update. Thank you, Tom. And I see Lisette joining us as well.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We'll be as brief as possible in this presentation, joined by Lisette Camacho to my right, Financial Services Director, and I'm Tom Dunsing, Chief Deputy City Manager. So tonight really kicks off the budget process. And with, and what we're going to focus on is the long-range forecast of our operating funds. These are the funds that, that fund city services, the police, the fire, the operational pieces of what we do. This is not the CIP. It's a little bit interrelated, but this focuses mainly on our operating costs. I would argue that this is probably one of the most important things we do to maintain financial stability, is review this with you, review it in our office, and then develop a budget around the available resources we have. You'll hear a recurring theme tonight, and I mentioned it a little bit in the prior presentation, and that's our loss of residential revenue. And I've got it on several slides. We'll talk about it a little bit. The one thing I will say is, this has created a structural issue in our general fund. It has also created an issue in our transit fund. Our transit fund is pretty solid, but our transit fund relies almost solely on sales tax. And as you know, residential rental impacted sales tax. And so we'll be working with the engineering and transportation staff to go develop strategies. It's not a short-term problem in the transit fund. It's really going to be over a period of several years. But, but we will have to address that, and rest assured, we will. We've never shied away from issues. We won't shy away from this. And the way I would couch it is, this loss of the residential revenue is, this is a manageable problem. We just have to be responsible. And probably one of the most important tools that we have is communication. Communication to you, communication to the public. And I can tell you, when we were going through and kind of penciling this together, the electronic ink was hardly even dry before our city manager put it in one of her weekly updates to our staff. So we're very well informed, and that we do appreciate happening. And with that, I will turn it to Lisette.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Before I start, I would like to acknowledge the hard work of the budget staff in developing our long-range forecast. I want to thank Lori Osikowski, Scott Gruber, Kevin DiDomenico, and Benicia Benson. The long-range financial forecast directly aligns with the financial stability of the city. The goal is to maintain the highest general obligation bond rating by keeping the general fund within fund balance policy levels. The specific measures are 5.04 and 5.05. As we start the fiscal year 2025 budget process, I'd like to briefly review the upcoming public meeting dates in the budget development process for both capital and operating budgets. On the slide in front of you, the capital is on the left side, and the operating is on the right side. We'll begin the public forums in February, going into March. We'll present the proposed capital projects in February, along with the updated long-range forecast. The initial recommended capital projects will be presented in March. We have two budget review sessions, one in April and one in May, a follow-up if needed. The tentative budget adoption is scheduled for May 21st. The public hearing and final budget adoption is on June 6th, and then the property tax levy is on June 27th. I'll turn over the presentation to Mr. Dunsing for now.
Thanks, Lisette. Go through these fairly quickly. So assumptions that we used in the forecast. So, so overall, we are assuming that the economy will remain stable. We never know, but I can tell you, at this point, we haven't seen signs of the economy weakening in Arizona, and especially in Tempe, and that's kind of a testament to, we've got a really diversified portfolio of revenue generators. It's property tax, sales taxes. And so we're set up pretty well to weather any recessionary trends. I talked about it, and you see here, the elimination of residential rental collections is effective January 1, 2025. And you'll sort of see the impact of that in a couple of slides on, on how it impacts primarily the general fund and really the transit fund. The inflation, we've seen, it's sort of tempering a little bit. We are still dealing with worker shortages and supply chain issues, so we'll continue to work through that. We are assuming that we honor our current memorandum of understanding. In other words, we compensate our employees fairly. And so that's, that's assumed in what you'll see in a couple of slides. We did anticipate a reduction in state shared revenues. We probably saw a little uptick in the reduction, meaning reduced a little further than what we thought. Fortunately, this is offset by interest earnings we're seeing in our investments. When the Federal Reserve raises interest rates, one of the silver linings is, we do get a higher return on our investments that we have at the city, and that helps us with sort of stabilizing our funds. So what's changed from the February forecast? The big one is elimination of residential rental. Again, it's effective January 1, 2025. It was just signed into law three months ago, so we're having to react fairly quickly. Luckily, we've got a little bit of reprieve before it takes effect, but we will have to address that. All other revenue projections, we are forecasting to grow moderately. And historically, we've been very accurate on, on our forecast assumptions, and we wouldn't, we don't expect any different. Hotel motel revenues, we're seeing that they're remaining strong, and we've seen a lot of development. So hopefully, they will continue to remain strong. And again, I talked about state shared income tax revenues. We are expecting a decline. We were expecting that about a year ago. It's just a little bit deeper than what we thought, but, but it's, it's not anything that, that really impacts us too much. And finally, our beloved Ken McDonough Rolling Hills golf courses. You know, we have new management agreements, so we won't be presenting those funds anymore because we don't support the operations. We, we actually have a managed services now on that, and there's a revenue component that we include here. So residential rental tax elimination. This shouldn't be a surprise. We've sent out information on this. And here you see by fund what the impact is. Fiscal 2425, which is this upcoming budget year, were only impacted by about half. In other words, it's, it's effective January 1, 2025. And then you see the full impact beyond that. And what that does, and, and we'll talk about, well, a couple of things. One is, it's about a 9% sales tax revenue loss. 9% of sales taxes in the general fund. Luckily, we've got more revenue sources in the general fund to help temper that a little bit. But in our transit fund, it's almost the sole funding source of our transit fund, so it's a significant loss. Luckily, our transit fund, and Lisette will review it in just a few slides, we are, we have a very healthy fund balance, but we can't live off that forever. We will be making some decisions in the next couple of years. So you'll see in the general fund, which is typically the biggest focus of these sorts of presentations, we're talking between a $14 and $15 million impact. And when we plug these reductions in, along with all the other changes, what we've done is, we've really identified about a $14 or $15 million structural deficit in our general fund that we will have to address. Just real quick, this is pretty easy, and we track our sales tax closely. This is the trend we're seeing. So again, there's nothing concerning that we see here that we would have to assume that our, our revenue estimates, we'd have to adjust them down. We try to be a little bit conservative, but not too much. And so again, we're seeing pretty nice trends in our sales tax. So as usual, I want to spend just a little bit of time on this slide. This is the slide, or this is the information that we really use to go and form our budget decisions. So all the numbers you see here are in thousands. In other words, you have to add three zeros. So revenues in, for instance, in 2223 of 296, that's 296,329 in our general fund. And really, the chart on the upper right-hand side is a very nice illustration of what we're facing. Because of our residential rental sales tax loss, we would basically spend through our fund balance policy, that's that yellow area, in about two years and drop below our fund balance policy. This is what we, this is the challenge we have. This is what we'll correct, and this is what our budget will be framed around in this upcoming process. So for purposes of this, we typically look at that, that sort of middle section that says estimated new funding for analysis purposes. What we did is, we went ahead and we revised our, our revenue assumptions. We revised our expenditure forecast assumptions, but we kept the, the new funding the same as what you saw in February. And just to illustrate the impact of what residential rental will do. So this is typically the first place we would go to in order to solve our problem. An example of that is, we assumed recurring supplementals of $5 million a year. This is added costs of $5 million a year that we would go through the budget supplemental process and bring back to council. This is typically one of the first areas we would go, and I referred to the city manager's message. At this point, what we are telling directors is no budget supplementals. And this is the exact reason, because we have this issue that we're going to have to address, and we will. So just real quick, maybe about the last time I say it, residential rental tax loss, $14, $15 million a year. It did create our structural issue. It's nothing that, that this community or this council created. This was a state law that was passed. There's, there's, of the 91 cities, about 73 cities are impacted by this. And it did impact us. And, and I would probably say the biggest reason it impacted us is, we have service needs. This community's changing. We're growing up. There's public safety needs. Those take resources. And what this will do is somewhat tie our hands in addressing those service needs. We will. We'll work with Wydell and her staff and work with the city manager to balance our service needs with the, the budget adjustments necessary to address this. Again, I talked about interest earnings, state shared revenue. One of the things in fiscal 2023, the fiscal year that ended just a few months ago, we did finish better than what we projected. I should have put the word slightly, but we did finish better than, than projected. That provides us a little bit of flexibility to work with city manager's office to maybe, maybe address a few one-time issues that, that come up. One of the things that we are conservative about, but we're still seeing revenues come in strong, and that's our, our building permits, and that's, that's really a result of the development that you see. We anticipated that will continue. Again, we're a little bit conservative on that because that's not a revenue you live or die by. And then lastly, what I'll say is, our forecast assumes we have certain projects that we have identified cash funding for. Those are still in the forecast, so, and that's where that tie to the CIP really happens in the, you know, with these operating funds. So we are assuming that we're still going to make these, these Pago, what we call them, CIP Pago contributions. pay-go contributions. So I'll spend just a moment on here. This slide is a pretty simple look at what that fund balance would have done had we not lost the residential rental revenue. That's on the left. That's where we would be tonight had we not had a reduction. We would be talking about $5 million in available supplementals and the like. But because of this law, we have that chart on the right, and that's the exact same chart that you saw in the previous slide, and that really is our challenge. So this really kind of sums up the issue of the loss. And with that, I'll finally turn it over to Lisette.
Mayor, members of the council, on the next two slides, we'll go over the long-range forecast for the enterprise funds and the special revenue funds. The water and wastewater fund is stable, and the fund balance remains within the policy throughout the forecast period. Revenue amounts include the recommended future rate adjustments from the most recent rate study that was completed last year. The forecast also assumes a planned drawdown of fund balance in a sustainable manner that includes increased pay-as-you-go or cash funding of CIP projects. The solid waste fund is also projected to have fund balance within policy throughout the forecast period. The revenues also include recommended future rate adjustments. The emergency medical transportation fund is also stable. The revenues are significantly higher compared to the last forecast in February, and we are projecting annual surpluses throughout the forecast period. The capital reserve and fund balance policies for the fund are still in process. We'll continue to work with the fire medical rescue department to refine the policies. Moving on to the special revenue funds.
Quick thing, actually, is that, I'm sorry. Councilor Hodge, did you want to wait till the end? Do you want to ask right now?
I have my questions for Tom.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Great. Thank you. Sorry.
The transit fund balance remains within policy throughout the forecast period, but as Tom said, we are projecting annual losses due to the elimination of residential rental sales tax. That equates to a 9% reduction in tax revenues for the fund. We'll continue to monitor revenues and expenditures and explore long-term balancing strategies to ensure the transit fund remains stable. The transportation fund receives most of its revenue from the distribution of state shared highway user revenue funds, or HERF. As you know, HERF revenues are subject to any pending legislative action that may change the distribution formula. Revenue projections are lower compared to the last forecast in February. This is based on new estimates from the Department of Transportation and also our year-to-date actual revenues. We'll also continue to monitor revenues and expenditures and economic trends to ensure that the fund balance in the transportation fund is within policy. The arts and culture fund remains stable despite the elimination of residential rental sales tax. Revenue projections continue to exceed expenditure projections throughout the forecast period. And that does conclude our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
And if I could, Mayor, just say a couple of things, if I might.
Always.
First off, Mark Day is not here. We miss him. But the first thing is I'd like to thank Lisette on my right. She stepped up. She said, "I will fill in." We haven't skipped a beat. We have not skipped a beat. And so really, a heartfelt thank you for the work that she's done. This is her work primarily. I get to get up here and talk quite a bit, but this is primarily her work. The other thing is we have to and we will work the issue of this revenue loss. Again, we're already having discussions about it about every week on how we're going to do this. This is a manageable issue, and it's a temporary issue. It may take two to three years to get through it. We'll get through it, and then off we go. So I appreciate that, Mayor, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. We'll go to Councilor Hodge and then Councilor Keating.
Okay. Well, Lisette, thank you for all the work you put into it. It would have been even better if you'd have put Mark's head up there on the big, you know, we have floating around here, so we should have done that. My question is, I just went through the school where we just did our demographers' report on the fluctuation of children. I was wondering, can we get something on projection of what's going to be coming into our city, what's leaving our city, so we can kind of get an idea of a demographers' report for the overall of the city when it comes to new rentals, new people coming in, basing that with the education, with the kids and all that together to see exactly where we're going to stand in the next couple of years? Because I see a downfall for kids, but I just want to know if that's something that's going to look, how that looks in the city, too. So I was wondering, can we get that?
Certainly. We can take that back to our budget staff. That's right in their wheelhouse.
Thank you.
Councilor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Certainly, I was a little worried about it, but it doesn't seem nearly as bad as when you first hear we're going to have this hole in our budget. So kudos to you and your team, you know, the good work that you're doing. My question's about the CIP. So I understand that the CIP, the current CIP will not be affected, is what it sounds like. Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the, that's actually a great question. We've got currently in this year's budget, it's between $600 and $700 million. The only portion of that that would be effective is if we do a pay-as-you-go transfer into the CIP. We do have forecasted pay-as-you-go transfers into the CIP, but to a 98%, 99% level, they will not impact the CIP. In fact, we've gone through, and because of our, and I'm getting a little bit off-topic, it's still on topic, Clarence. We've gone through, and we will have a little bit of capacity because of new properties that have come on the rolls, to pay property tax. So all in all, our CIP is unaffected.
So thank you for that answer. That's obviously good news as well. So you anticipate then the CIP really won't be impacted by this over the long run?
Mayor, members of the council, the CIP should not be affected residential rental. What will impact the CIP is the inflation that we've seen. So it will make it, we will have some tough decisions in the CIP. We do every year. But we will manage that. There's no problem managing that. You can delay projects. You can defer. There's a lot of tools to impact that, but the level of funding should not be affected.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? I just have one. So in talking about, and kind of piggybacking off of Councilor Keating's question regarding the CIP, and I know, Tom, during the conversation about the Start Tool this evening, you talked about, you know, some potential acceleration models for streets and repaving and things of that nature. So just regarding the bond rating, so obviously, we always want to maintain the highest possible bond rating. And so my question is, if we ask for more money in bonds, I mean, I know as an example, the city of Phoenix has a $500 general obligation bond coming up next week, but does that affect our bond rating if we ask for too much? Or does it affect, or is it just basically the property tax stabilization policy of the council? Because I'm just thinking about several things. I keep thinking about streets. I keep thinking about affordable housing, which is obviously a big deal to a lot of our residents. And I even think about things like historic preservation. And so I just keep thinking about, I would love to ask for more, but I also want to make sure that I'm not negatively impacting our bond rating or doing something which is really going to, in a sense, mess up the property tax stabilization policy that the council established well over a decade ago.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, we brought back PQI on September 28th. The PQI anticipated we'd issue about 135 million in addition to what's already programmed in the CIP. And what that does is that will raise the secondary levy for a median household, it's about $81 a year. The one thing that we did in that exercise is we actually talked to our investment banker, because your question is spot on. What does that do to our bond rating? How much debt can a city handle without impacting the bond rating? The answer we got back is this 135 million shouldn't affect our bond rating. I switched to this slide. One of the things that they look at is that chart on the upper right. If we did nothing, you bet that would affect our bond rating. That's why we'll do something. But what we would do, if there are new programs that the council wants to see advanced, and we want to do it over and above what our current level of CIP is, the first thing we do is we go to our investment bankers and say, what would this do to our bond rating? So I couldn't answer that question tonight. It would be a question for our investment banker.
Okay. Sounds good. And I think you said you're scheduled to come back, I believe it's December 5th, to talk about the bond program for November 2024, if I'm right?
That's correct. I think that's the next work-study session.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. That's my only question. Councilor Hodge?
No, Mayor. First, thank you guys for presenting. This is great information, as always with everything else that we have to prepare ourselves for the next season. I just want to let the council know that when we talk about, you know, and I said this before, the core, the core of the city, making sure that the things that we have to provide for our residents, that we do provide. And I know this kind of hurts us a little bit in terms of making those strides like we want to. I know where I work at, we're told to not ask, or if we're going to ask for certain key things, it has to be extremely of a need. And I know that our staff and everyone else works for the city of Tempe understands that. And I want to just, like, express to the council, I mean, I think that we have workers here that are doing their best with what they have. And I know that there are other needs out there that can make the job even easier, the fact that we're understaffed in various different ways. Technology could be utilized in various ways. But I just want to keep mindful as we go forward that we're making sure that we're taking care of those core values of the city, then making sure that those things get done first, because that's the service that we do have to provide for our residents, and making sure we do it effective and efficiently.
Absolutely. Definitely. Spot on. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Councilor Chin?
Yeah, I'm debating internally about this comment, and it's really, since we also heard from Shawna Warner tonight, I can't help but go back to the state legislative principles and how this entire discussion about the shortfall and how we're trying to juggle some things, like many families do, right? When there's a loss of income, what you have to give up to make up for something else, that we don't forget the pain points of this and make sure we share with our other partner cities through the League of Arizona Cities and towns, and make sure we communicate, right? How we're affected, what's being affected, and who is being affected by some of these cuts. And I think some of the other cities, you said, out of 90-some, 73 are impacted. So let's make sure we stay in communication and share our thoughts with those in our legislature.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments? All right. Seeing none. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. The next item on the agenda is the call to the audience for Committee of the Whole items. There are no items for city council direction or status update this evening. So given that, I will skip to item number five here. Committee of the Whole. Item 5B, council committees in progress. Updates is needed. Do any council members have updates on their council committees this evening or any work you're doing? Nope. All right. That brings us to item number six, future agenda items. Does anyone have any items they'd like to add to a future work-study session agenda? Councilor Hodge?
That's the one I wanted to add, the one I asked for.
Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The one I asked for you, Tom, that's the only future item I want to add, is the demography of the report.
Okay. I see the city manager nodding, so that sounds good. Okay. Wonderful. Anyone else on council with any other future agenda items you'd like added? All right. Seeing none. That moves us to item number seven, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I don't have any announcements this evening. Madam City Manager?
I just have two quick items, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to set the record straight that while our CFO, Chief Deputy City Manager, gave lots of credit to Lisette, who is doing an outstanding job, he is also doing double time, and he would be the last person to acknowledge that because he's too humble. But I wanted to make sure that I made that very public and embarrass him.
Well, as you know, Madam City Manager, I continue to try to beat Tom into the office every morning. It is impossible to beat that man into the office. I have tried many times, and I've never done it.
Mayor, I call him the hardest-working person in the city of Tempe. I say that every day to him.
All right.
And the last item, I just, I had the opportunity to meet with our new park rangers, Director Craig Hayden and Alex Divonovich, who is heading up the training program. It's important for everyone to know, I know the community is awaiting the arrival of the park rangers. You will have a formal kind of introduction to the 14 park rangers? 14. Four weeks of training and onboarding, getting to know not just the work, but their fellow colleagues in other departments and all the services that are available to them as they service our community in the parks. So the community can expect to see them November 27th in our parks and in our preserves. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam City Manager. Eddie, would you mind going back to the Tempe Jam slide just for two seconds here, just to make sure I read that? That's going to be taking over the Tempe Sports Complex this Saturday, November 4th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., which provides an unforgettable evening that celebrates the heart and soul of Tempe's local creative scene. This is a free, all-ages event that combines live music, LED-suited dancers, fire performers, and plus, you can actually screen, print your own artist-designed t-shirt. Beer and wine will be available for purchase at Drink Tent, and it'll be hosted by the Tempe Diablos. So please get full event details at tempe.gov/tempejam. With that, I don't have any additional announcements. Next is adjournment, item number eight. The next regular work-study session is scheduled for November 20th, 2023. We are adjourned.